Good evening. I want to call the meeting for the Select Board open here on Monday, October 20th at 5:30 PM. If we could, did the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, the which stands our nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Peter? If you could just read that first paragraph right underneath where it says...
Oh, okay.
In accordance...
You got it. Wow, you could write any smaller. In accordance with the requirements... Yeah, I could do that. Thank you. Geez, I should know technology by that way. Let's try that again. In accordance with the requirements of open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by East Bridgewater Community Access Media, EB Cam. The meeting is available viewing on the EB Cam website at www eb/cam.org and will be uploaded to the EB Cam YouTube channel following this meeting. All right. That being said, has anyone here for open forum? Great, that's perfect. Moving right along then. I will call that closed. Our first appointment is with Councilman Mr. John Lally. Want to come on up for a second, sit right here?
Or you're not being grilled.
Yep, we're not getting grilled at all. So every so often, the Board of Selectmen recognizes certain individuals for what they've done for our community, for our town, and for the Board in general. We've asked Councilman Lally to come today so we could recognize him for all the work he did with our sewer project down on Route 18. Without John's help and my multiple phone calls to him, I don't think we would certainly be here where we are today. So John, I want to thank you, I'm sure the rest of the Board as well. I even brought Mr. Sheedy back in, dusted him off of the cobwebs and whatnot, and we have him come back in here for this as well because it's a great honor to, as we spoke about last day, to have you be able to come in and present this recognition to you for all your work. So if you want to say a couple things, you know, I know it's a...
Don't touch it.
No, you don't need to touch the camera. Yeah, you just...
Number one thing I've learned is everyone's got different microphones.
Yeah, absolutely.
And like, you gotta be really careful because you touch that one, you break it. You don't touch that one, you break it. No, I'm honored. I appreciate the recognition. It wasn't that many phone calls.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's the first one that's ever said that to me.
Yeah, there you go. No, I appreciate, you know, being invited here today and the recognition. I appreciate all the work that the town did with the city of Brockton. And, you know, you guys, you worked very hard and I think we reached a pretty good result.
Absolutely.
This is the kind of thing that benefits, you know, the city of Brockton, the town of East Bridgewater, an intermunicipal partnership. We had sewer capacity, you needed sewer capacity. Now we have, you know, some more income that, you know, makes it easier on our constituents and you have a lot more opportunity to offer to the town and to your residents and to your businesses. So I really appreciate the recognition. I'm very happy that we were able to get this done, get this done so well. I want to thank, you know, all the people who were involved in it from East Bridgewater, from the city of Brockton, Mary Waldron, the OCPC. You know, they did a lot of work to put everyone together. And I'm glad it worked out and I look forward to continuing to be a good partner and a good neighbor to the town and I'll see you guys around. But I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you, Carol. You want to...
No, I was just to echo what Peter said. I was not directly involved with the project, but everything I heard, you know, told me how instrumental you were in working with everybody on this side of the property lines to get things done. So we thank you as a former Brocktonian myself and now East Bridgewater. This is a great way for the two of us to combine, right?
Absolutely.
Our hometowns with our current town. So thank you for everything you did.
Yeah, thank you so much. Like you said, it's having good neighbors, right, and being able to have that mutual connection now. That's, you know, Peter did a great job facilitating a lot of this. So great work that both of you did really, but thank you so much. It's great to have a good partner in Brockton. So, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
David, you want to come up and say a couple words or are you happy to just sit in the back and yell?
I'd seat back in.
That's it, great.
I will add to it, you know, Jack was president of the City Councils in the Finance Committee as we were going through this process. And I agree with what you said, Peter. If it wasn't for what he took and ran with himself, I don't know if we ever could have accomplished what we did. So, you know, everybody involved did a fantastic job, but with your leadership that brought it to, you know, the finale.
Yeah, absolutely. And John Hayes I spoke to today, who's been a big part of mine in this project along with the Board and the rest of the town departments and everybody. We had to do, like I said, there was times where, you know, we didn't think we were going to get it through, but we did. And, you know, the long-term goal of this project in that corridor will be, I think, a tremendous benefit to the town. And again, I want to thank you. We do have a citation here. I don't typically read these, so I'm not going to read this one either because they...
Fair enough.
They don't really say what needs to be said, like we just did, that, you know, "I look forward to working with you in the future as a councilman and a future mayor." I can see that coming as well, for sure. A little pressure on the...
Yeah, I thought I wasn't getting grilled.
Yeah, right, 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 down the way. But John, we're gonna take a quick... You want to take a quick photo over here with us?
Yeah.
With the Board and...
We're not casual clothes tonight, of course.
Yeah, maybe just next to the flag.
I look older without my glasses.
All right.
All right, we know you've got a meeting as well. We know you've got a meeting as well tonight, so I appreciate you coming in and taking the time.
They're not honoring me at that one.
No, no?
Yeah.
That usually happens at these meetings, you know? It's not the good accolades that we deserve, for sure.
Thank you.
All right, thank you again. All right, Jack. Okay. Well, like I said, it's always good to, especially people that... Usually it's people from in town, right? To have some people from out of town that are helping the community is always a great benefit as well. So we had another, our next appointment was with the East Bridgewater Community Garden, but they are unable to attend tonight, right?
Yeah, so I gave them a couple of future dates and they'll get back to me when they'll be able to come.
Okay, sounds good. All right, so are these... We got to be spot on with these appointments or...
No, these aren't legal hearings or anything like that.
Perfect. Makes me feel even better. All right, so we've got Diane Phillips. Come on up. Yeah, bring up the group, introduce yourselves and let's talk about some trails.
Right. Bring in some friends with us.
Yep. Always good to have friends.
Thank you.
How you doing?
Thank you. Okay, how are you?
Excellent.
Thank you.
So, thank you for having us come tonight.
Absolutely.
So I represent the Friends of East Bridgewater Trails and Matt Dyer's here representing Old Colony Planning Council. Amber Sterns is representing the Appalachian Mountain Club and in the Bay Circuit Trail, so she's responsible for that. And several friends of Trails. We're sort of a new group that we all belong to bridging the Bridgewater's, which is a very, very active trail group that have got the community together and really have built amazing trail system and they're still working. They've got the Cub Scouts working, the Boy Scouts, they have the Conservation Commission, the whole town is working toward building trails. So they've been inviting East Bridgewater along for the last few years to see getting us active and engaged. Kitty Dougherty, I don't know if you've met her before, is instrumental in getting a lot of people to do a lot of things and she doesn't let you forget. And so she encouraged us to think about what's East Bridgewater's vision for trails. And so we've been here before. We've looked at building on the existing old railroad beds for years. And not until we met together with Kitty's group did we see there were a lot of people out there that also shared in that vision. And so that's how we connected with the Appalachian Mountain Club and the Old Colony Planning Council, which are great trail advocates. So Matt's going to explain what we're thinking about and really we're here just for your blessing to see if you would encourage us to go further from tonight. So...
Thank you. Mr. Sheer, members of the Board, my name is Matt Dyer. I'm a Senior Transportation Planner at Old Colony Planning. For those who are at home and not familiar with Old Colony Planning, we're a state agency that supports our municipalities at a regional level and initiatives of all sorts. So I'm a transportation planner. Part of my job, one aspect of it, is active transportation and trying to build out more sidewalks, multi-use trails, bike lanes and whatnot. So when I heard about the initiative here in East Bridgewater, I was thrilled to be a part of it and join the AMC in pursuit of it. So tonight, it's just a really quick presentation that we have. As what was mentioned, we're just asking for a vote from the Board in support of it. On the handout that I gave you on the second slide, it's just a quick little map of the trail. I wish I had it blown up, but I can send you the digital version as well. This trail would go on the old rail line easements from the ironwork sites in Bridgewater up into Whitman to the current train station. And it's about eight miles. And this would be a really great backbone for the community as it would connect to open space, recreation opportunities, public transit. And it would really help small businesses. Of all the studies that have come out, say that bike or multi-use pathways really support a local economy. As people bear off the path, go grab an ice cream, fall in love with a little trinket, buy the trinket. And it really supports a really nice local economy. Tonight, I don't have fine details tonight because that's the whole premise of why we're here, is we want to first get your blessing before we really work on the small details, to come back and then present it to you for the next step. So on the third slide, on the second page, it just kind of talks about the standards. We'd be following Massachusetts standards for multi-use pathways. It would be about 10 to 12 feet wide. It could be a paved surface or stone dust. And these are things that when we're doing community outreach, we'd be asking. This is not just the group coming in saying, "We want to do this." It's obviously a lot of community outreach and especially working with property owners to make sure that we can get that easement and be good neighbors and make sure that this project doesn't become a headache for the town. That's not our initiative is to become a headache. It's to only benefit and make the community better. So this pathway would be ADA accessible in all forms, not just for wheelchair accessible, but vision impaired or hearing impaired. It would be fully conforming to ADA standards. And as I said, this is just the first step in a lot of steps, but pretty much there'd be three big steps that I think the group would be taking. Tonight is just asking for the preliminary work to be done, giving us the okay to kind of start doing that community outreach. And then we'd come back to you for the next step, which would be the feasibility study to do a 25% design. And then after the 25% design, we'd go back and start working towards building out the trail with the blessing of the Board, of course, and the community. And on your packet, there is my business card, if you have any questions about it. But that's pretty much what I have to say. Amber?
Sure, I will, out of my two cents. My name is Amber Sterns. I work for the Appalachian Mountain Club and I am the Bay Circuit Trail Coordinator. So if you're not familiar with the Bay Circuit Trail, this is a 230-mile multi-use trail from Newburyport on the North Shore, loops out and around greater Boston, follows the 495 Beltway, and concludes in Kingston Bay. And one of the 38 towns that the Bay Circuit Trail passes through is East Bridgewater, in addition to Bridgewater and West Bridgewater. Currently, there is a gap in the trail, which is spanning from Ironworks Park in Bridgewater to, I think, Spring Street in East Bridgewater. And so this rail trail proposition would directly bridge that gap through open space instead of on-road. And this is just a really exciting opportunity. One of the aspects of my job is to bridge the gaps in the trail. There's one here, there's one in Lowell, and then one in Tewksbury and Billerica. And so those are the three that are on my radar and that are my primary tactic here. And this is not the first time either that the Bay Circuit has shared space in the rail trails. So the Mass Central Rail Trail in Wayland and Weston occupies space with Bay Circuit, in addition to the Bruce Freeman Trail in Acton and Chelmsford. So I'm really excited about this proposition and I really wanted to advocate for it and speak to you all today. So thank you for giving us the time for that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, this is long overdue. I mean, we've been talking about this for what, 20 years?
20 years.
Anyway.
Yeah, Kathleen...
You know, Mr. Wilbur back in the day. And, you know, it would be great to see this actually happen. I know that that gap exists and, you know, I've been camping on the canal since September and see that Cape Cod, you know, canal trail used so much. And I think if we had it, people would really use it and benefit from it. So I would love to give this my blessing to go forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess I just have a couple of questions. So with this, the blessing that we give you tonight for community outreach, is that sponsored by OCPC?
Yeah, so for the first part of the first phase, a part of the Mass DOT contract and your benefits of being a part of the OCPC community would be essentially working for you for free.
Okay.
So there's really no financial obligation on that first step. As we approach the second step to hire an engineering firm to do the 25% design, that's when we're going to have to start strategizing about funds and grants and trying to minimize... I'm a former selectman. So minimizing that financial obligation to a project, I'm all for it. So by looking for grants and making sure that we do it financially in a good sense is my number one priority.
Okay.
Because I would love to see it happen. I don't want it to be a burden.
Right, exactly. And I think a big concern, I know right now with grants is because we're not in compliance with some state legislation, that those grants are kind of up in the air. So I want to just make sure we're careful being able to apply. I don't know if there's a way to, for like, it to be done almost through Bay State to see if they could get the funding or like if there's a way to kind of all work together so that we could figure out the funding for that feasibility study once that step comes in. I know I'm thinking ahead, but I'm just thinking logistically here, cost-wise, you know, trying to get the smartest deal out of this, right? What looks good and working with, you know, having you all at the table tonight is huge. So... And then question now, and I apologize if this is a dumb question, but what is a 25% design? Could you explain that for people that don't know?
Yeah, that's a great question because sometimes even in the engineering world, the 25% design can be a whole slew of different interpretations of what it is. But basically, it's getting an idea of where that trail's going to go. It's going to kind of give an idea of certain hurdles that we're going to have to overcome. It's just a very simple plan. It's not fine details of, oh yeah, you know, there's going to be a bench here or whatnot. It's going to be just a very simple overlay of what, where the trail's going to go, certain areas that we're going to have to pay attention to. We can, it's all in the way that we want to put out for bid. Do we want to ask for some nice design pictures, like in the packet and whatnot? So it's really what you guys want to ask out of that 25% design, but basically it's just a very high-level view of an engineering plan.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Yeah, that's all the questions I have.
Great. Yeah, so, you know, you had me at Old Colony Planning, right? Is that the line they say, right? Mary in town, well, her favorite town, for sure.
Absolutely.
Yeah, 100%.
Yeah.
So, you know, we certainly have the faith in your organization to help this group that's been searching for this process for a long period of time. So I think, you know, obviously the blessing tonight gets us, you know, hopefully to that next step. And then I'm sure we can get creative as we quite often do to try to find out what we can do down there, you know? Because this is just the beginning. We've opened up another like 30 acres over on Route 18 with this deal we just talked about. So there'll be, I think there'll be other opportunities for us in recreation because, you know, as much building as we do commercially or residentially, we certainly want to have a sound mind to the fact that we want recreation as well. And I think the townspeople want to see that as well. So I think this is a good step to keep this group moving forward. And as Carol had said, you know, Howard would be very happy with us knowing that's going on.
Have to get him to one of these meetings.
Absolutely, yeah. Well, maybe not the meeting, but... Maybe after which we can sit down. Might be a little longer than we expected. No, he's a good guy. So yes, I will certainly entertain a motion from you, Catherine, to move forward with...
Yeah, how should we word it? Because we're making a motion to...
We're just voting to support the project at this point?
I would say so, right? Charlie, what do you think?
Is that sufficient, Matt?
Yeah, support the project and just to have the town okay with us kind of doing the outreach and talking with property owners just to kind of figure out where the easements can really fall.
Maybe to do the first of the next steps then?
Yeah.
Yep.
The primary feasibility study?
Yep.
Um, okay, yeah, so...
So we're just supporting the preliminary feasibility as Charlie's...
Okay. Make a motion to support the preliminary feasibility phase led by the East Bridgewater Rail Trail Group for the town of East Bridgewater?
Yep.
Second.
All right, motion made in second. Discussion, anything else? Does anyone from the other, the rest of the group want to add anything? Just thumbs up.
Rail trails are just great for, you know, not just recreation, but accessibility for folks that are not drivers, you know, all sorts of disabilities. It gets them to places that they just couldn't get to otherwise, you know? And I've been on several of them across the state now and they're just gorgeous. And they encourage, you know, community and just getting out there. And, you know, right now with all this foliage, it would just be, everybody would just be out on it.
Yep, I agree. Thank you, Jackie.
Sure.
Okay, so seeing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, guys, good luck.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then close that.
You did?
Yeah. It's fairly quick. So we're going to have some time. We can move, move. Charlie, we can move ahead, right?
No.
Maybe we'll take, you know, Mr. Coffey's here.
Well, I'm sure the others are...
Bounce these two land situations. Mr. Graham, too? Yeah, no, it's him.
Maybe action items?
Oh, you want to wait for him?
No.
Okay, you got it. Sorry, tried to push you.
Just in case.
You can enjoy our action items, as I say.
I am, so far.
Okay, to approve the minutes of the October 6, 2025 Select Board's meeting.
Second.
Motion made in second. No discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to review fees of licenses and permits calendar year 2026.
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion?
So what had happened, why this came up was back during last spring, being spring six months ago, when we were dealing with our finances and saying, you know, we were looking for quarters under the cushions seats type of thing. I had asked Lee to take another look at what our fee structures were. They haven't been updated, some of them in 15 or 20 years, say. And so there's a potential, given the state limits on fees and the fact that obviously during that time, inflation has devalued our dollars and such, that if the Board wanted to, it could vote to increase fees for a number of the licenses and permits at issues on an annual basis. This would be the time to do so in that Lee will be sending out by the end of this month, the renewal forms for those licenses. And we need to tell the permit holders, license holders, what the fees are for calendar year 26. So if the Board wanted to make any changes in them, it would be done at this meeting. If the Board decided to table it, not interested, that's perfectly fine. But I wanted the Board to have an opportunity to review this and to make a decision, to make, to change any of the fees. There's one fee that the, for whatever reason, East Bridgewater, through Town Meeting Action, voted a bylaw for the common vituress license. Not liquor, but the food licenses. And so to make a change in that has to go to Town Meeting. There's an article to do that, to go from $50 to $100 for a common vituress license. It hasn't been updated so long that even that would not bring it up to the value of $50 back when it was approved a couple decades ago. And similarly, for the other licenses that are on the list there, we're not catching up with inflation, even though we would be increasing the fees. And at this point, you know, even $10,000, as much as we have a budget of $63 million, we are still looking for the quarters under the cushions. And $10,000 could be of assistance in helping to fund the budget for next year.
Carol, you want to start?
Sure. I mean, most of them seem reasonable, but some of them seem like higher jumps, like some of the wine and malt and the all-alcoholics seem like a more significant jump. Do we have any sense of, you know, the impact that's going to have on any of our businesses, whether that would, you know, be a burden to them?
Well, so for instance, the, I'll give you, I'll give you the package store. So for instance, a package store, wine and malt goes up by 50%, but the, in terms of inflation, it hasn't, it's been far greater than that. I can't say that it won't. I mean, obviously, 250 is 250 in the sense of we'd be taking 250 from their cash register and putting it into ours. Thing is that the value of the license certainly has gone up over the decades.
Sure. And these fees, you think that they're competitive with our neighbors?
Yeah, given that we haven't updated them for a couple of decades.
I don't want to see us get skewed out of...
No, and I mean, as...
West Bridgewater or Whitman or...
Yeah, I mean, the fees, you know, can still be, could have been greater than that. What we tried to do was find a balancing point that would have a material impact for the town, but at the same time, not the maximum amount that we could charge.
And then my only other comment would be that if we do this now, that then we put it on a schedule so that when we do increase fees, it's not, you know, a 50% jump.
Right.
It's, you know, a 5% jump in five years or something like that, so that it's not this big leap. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Catherine, you have anything?
Yeah, I would definitely love to see if we could get some numbers on, just in regards to the small business package stores in town. I would love to get some numbers on relative to like Whitman, all neighboring towns, if we could, if we could see that, if you could maybe send them over to us, just to have as a reference here. Because I think, you know, like you said, we want to make sure we remain competitive, right? And, but we're also making the smart economic decision for East Bridgewater. And then I would say the other question that I have is these, the possible fees, you know, those jumps that are made, putting that, is that in one year we would make that jump?
Yes.
Or, okay, you're, so we're saying...
So for calendar year 26, so you have the current fee, which is the one we charge for the year we're in now.
Right.
The possible fee is the fee we would charge beginning in 2026.
Okay, so the possible fee would begin at 2026. So I think in all fairness, I think we should, you know, make sure we're in active communication with those current license holders and, you know, work with them if they do need a payment plan on that. I'm sure most of them don't because they're much larger businesses, but like you said, same thing, Carol, is a schedule kind of. I do think it's a smart decision to raise them because I do think we do need the revenue, obviously. But yeah, I think those are... I'm trying to think if there was another fee that I was thinking about, but it's not on here, so never mind, actually. I will. That's all the questions that I have.
Yeah, so I mean, obviously it's time to start to recognize some of these. I think some years ago when I was on the Board of Health, we ran into a similar situation where the fees came out and nobody had looked at them in, again, decades. So it just didn't line up. But that being said, you know, we've been pretty good about communicating with, you know, whatever the class of business is, to give those people opportunity to come in. And you just don't know. I mean, you know, yacht sale people might come in and say, hey, you know, what's going on here? You know, why am I getting charged five bucks?
Well, the five bucks is what they've been charged.
I never knew that. That's obviously, yeah.
Yeah.
And so...
You've just been out there having yachts, haven't you?
I guess so, right.
There's no charge, there's no change, proposed change in the...
No, I know that. I just was, that one kind of struck me, you know?
The fortune teller's house.
All the yacht sales in East Bridgewater, we should be rolling in it right now.
I'm sure some people might not...
Oh, they're skipping out on that?
And the taxes. The yacht sales and the taxes.
Right, right. But yeah, all joking aside, I think, yeah, if we, you know, and I agree that we have to do this for sure, to try to get lined up. And I kind of like the idea of the percentages over a... idea of the percentages over a course of, of time, whatever the, that time date is, but I think we get a, you know, get a, get a regular scale of what we want to do and then, and then move forward, just in case, because you know it's gonna happen, we're gonna make a change and somebody's gonna say, you know, I didn't have any say in that, obviously, you know, what's going on. And then I'm back on Facebook again and, you know.
Don't look at Facebook.
Yeah, I think the job, like, having this discussion so close to the next, like, it's, it is, would be frustrating, especially if you were a small business owner, being like, okay, I just got notified, you know, in October about this change, you know, not that, I hope none of them get up and leave, but I think it is just something to think about in the future if we do make changes going forward.
Well, what, what if we, what if we phased it in? What if we did, this year we did half of the increase and then next year we did the other half? So this year we say to them, okay, well, this year you're gonna go from 50 to 75 and then next year you're gonna go from 75 to 100.
Yeah, we could, or take, some ones just make sense, right?
Some sort of like phase.
No, I mean, yeah, if you wanted to go, if you wanted to, you know, so for instance, the Class 123, the automobile licenses. If you wanted to go 125 for 26, then 150 for 27, you can do that.
But we have to make, we have to do something before.
Well, either you make a decision not to do anything.
Right.
Which is fine, or you make a decision to do whatever you want to do for 26, but you could then also say, fine, we're gonna also make a decision.
Yeah, I understand that, I meant, we have to have it, since something about before the end of the month.
Yeah, the reason is that the common vitrular, the alcohol licenses, we do all the licenses at the same time. Because of the ABCC, we have to send out the renewal forms by the end of this month, because they have then one month during November to send the forms back for renewal. Rather than bombard them with two or three mailings during that month and confusing things, we send out all the renewals at the same time, because many times, an establishment will have two or three different types of licenses.
Right.
Yeah, I think, I think another conversation here to have is, we should be having this conversation yearly, I think, and especially at the beginning of the year, um, you know, that way, and give, you know, more time for these businesses to be able to come in and say what they need to say, right? I do think it is a smart decision to raise the prices, but I also think that we need to make sure we're being fair to everybody here, right? So I would 100% say this does need to become a yearly conversation, because clearly we're waited and pushed it off long enough as we're, you know, trying to now jump 50% fees, but that is also, having that yearly conversation is more fair to those people who are trying to have these licenses, as well as to the town.
I don't know, I mean, I, I am in favor of doing something now. I'm just not necessarily in favor of the big jump. So like, I'm looking at like, the package store wine and malt and the package store all alcoholic, I mean, the common vitrular wine and malt, we don't even have anybody. But then the, was it general premises wine and malt and general premises alcoholic and the club licenses? Like, maybe if we just took those that had that highest percentage of jumps and just split.
Well, they're, they're actually, the jumps are all the same percentage.
Are they? Okay, so they're all.
The, the projection would be all 50, anything that could increase would be increased by 50%. So what you could do is take half of that.
So what if we did 25 this year and 25 next year?
In essence, yeah.
For those specific ones?
No, for all of them, because I didn't realize, because to me, I'm looking at it and that seems like a lot more, but it's just because the license is more.
Just because the numbers, yeah.
There's a reason I'm a librarian and not an accountant, so.
Well, you know, I'll give you an example, the jukebox license is not increasing at all, it's staying at $100, because that's actually the maximum allowed for a jukebox.
Okay.
Not that we have a lot of jukeboxes these days.
We have two. Oh, one, no, we have two.
But I would say if we, if we could just phase them in, it gives people a little bit of a.
So if you wanted to vote half the increase for 26 and then the other half would be 27.
I'd be comfortable with that, I don't know if you two.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think the, the, I don't think the change of it is going to affect anyone on, on the list overall, but, yeah, that's my point. Like, then again, I've been surprised more than once while sitting up here.
It just, it, it just brings a little bit more empathy to the plan.
Right, right.
So we could send a separate mailing to all the, all the businesses that have these licenses and just let them know of, if you approve that plan tonight, we can just let them know going forward, and then if they have any concerns, they can reach out to the office.
Sure.
Yeah.
Or attend a meeting, open forum.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would do that. I mean, that sounds like it's kind of a compromise, like, we, you know, see what, I mean, it's not like we're, we're chasing 400 people here, you know, we're not, it's like in, say in Brockton, right? We're, we're East Bridgewater, so we've got a, a number, but, I mean, I think to send something out, we can always reconvene before the end of, what the hell is the date today?
Um, the 20th of October.
20th, yeah. So we could even do that before town meeting, right? Have a.
You could.
It's to be done before the end of the month, though, you said?
Yeah.
If, if they're not happy, we'll hear back, right?
Yeah, but we'll just do like a separate.
Yeah, I like the idea, just so that we put something out there anyways.
Okay. Notify them, they're able to come to the table and we can say this is the change that we're, if they wanna have a, if they don't want that change, then they're more than welcome to come forward, but I do think, so do we, do we not make a decision on it then tonight?
And if we wait for them to come in, is that what you're saying?
What we're saying is we're sending, she's gonna send some documentation out to, you know, those businesses that are on this list regarding the 25% increase, is that what we're asking for, 25% instead of 50? Because you said 50, right, Charlie?
It's 50.
Well, it's 50 was the projected, if you wanted to do half of that, that'd be fine.
And then if there's, you know, some concern about that, they can certainly voice that concern through, you know, however you contact, email, phone, doesn't matter to me how they tell us, and then we get some feedback that way, at least we give them the opportunity.
Is it better that we vote it in and then we could pull it back if we wanted to? If we don't vote it in, then we can't.
Right.
But I'm saying we could do it at the meeting prior to the meeting.
I mean, we can't, you know, we're not gonna send them a notice in November after sending the renewal notice at the end of the month, we're not gonna send them a notice in November saying, oh, by the way, the fee's more than what we told you it was two weeks ago.
No, no. No, I meant, if we, does it make more sense to vote to do the increases?
I don't think, I think we have time to, you know, put something out and then, and then, when's the next, when's the?
Well, you'd have your five minute meeting.
Next week before town meeting.
The 27th, that gives plenty of time, right?
So you just want the.
Raising your hand, you're just scratching your head.
I'm not trying to get your attention.
Well, the attorney was, so whatever attorney puts a hand up.
You know, we're talking.
Hold on here.
So you just want the letter to say that you're thinking about increasing the fees?
Any concern.
There's a projected 25% increase that the board will be discussing on this date.
I just know by October 27th.
You know, you're welcome to come.
I think we have email addresses for just about everything.
Yeah, we could probably do email.
Yeah, I would do that, at least it gives them note, I don't think you're gonna hear anything, if you do, then we'll, we'll have that discussion at that particular period.
And then you want us to add this to the.
And then put it on the.
Yeah, yeah, fine, we can, I'm sure there'll be a couple of items we have to brush up before that meeting anyways.
Maybe.
Oh, absolutely. All right, sound good? Do we need to vote on that? I don't think so, because you're just gonna put a letter out, right? All right, good. All right, now we've gone too far.
Bob Looney's not here, is he coming?
Should be.
Well, I'll wait a couple more minutes and do the other action items and see if it comes in.
Sure. Catherine?
Um, make a motion to vote the intent to lay out Whit Marsh Lane Extension Phase Three as a public way and refer to the planning board for review, public hearing and formal recommendation.
Second.
All right. Motion made second, it's discussion, Charlie?
Um, no, it's, I mean, there's a specific process in the general laws and our bylaws about how we go through the acceptance of town roads. We get all the material first, but then send it back to the planning board for their review and a pub, and their public hearing, because they, they need to, in essence, say yes. Back when we approved that subdivision and did the lay, the primary layout of the road, they've now done everything that they're supposed to do as part of that layout. They'll have a public hearing, residents get notified, everything like that. If they say yes, then eventually this comes back to town meeting, probably in May.
Great. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote to approve the request from the library to surplus one small desk on wheels.
Second.
Motion made second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote to discuss, vote, discuss and vote on Select Board 2026 meeting schedule as printed below.
Second.
All right. Motion made second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, motion to approve signage and event permit request for Lauren Tavers Mulhern and Nadia Clancy of Community Coalition for Change, display 18 by 24 lawn signs on municipal property from June 1, 2026 to June 27, 2026, and for the use of the town common for the sixth annual celebration of multiculturalism, an event with food vendors, music speakers and performers, supporting diversity. Event will be from June 27, 2026, from 1 to 5.
Second.
Motion made second, any discussion? Good event.
Yes.
Attended it a few times.
I can't believe it's been six years.
All right, it's crazy, isn't it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, motion to discuss and vote on the request from the Kiwanis Club to place the shed in the town hall parking lot beginning in November in preparation for a naming ceremony and promotion of the annual tree sales.
Second.
Motion made second, discussion? Zach?
They're ahead of time, so people can see it, think they're used to it being here.
Right, and that's the shed that you named last year, right? Beautiful.
Also serve as a reminder that in fact, why the shed is there to begin with.
Yeah.
Good point.
We had a contest to name it, so we'll be announcing the.
They already did that, right? It was last year.
But, right, but did we announce the name? Did we announce?
Sign or name?
No, I know, but we didn't announce it, we announced it at a club meeting, but we haven't announced it at the, can I say it?
Do the people know they won?
So it's gonna be called the Kiwanis Kindness Shed.
Oh, you gave it away.
He just said I could.
Oh, there you go, okay. I didn't know if there's gonna be an unveiling of some sort, right?
Huh?
It's already been told.
Yeah, it's been announced at a Kiwanis meeting, that's why I figured it was okay and it's.
Now you've told the public, so.
Two kids?
Hopefully you told the person that won, they're chomping down right now in front of the TV.
Yeah. We had some, we had some really great names submitted, my personal favorite was Johnny Kewanee. I really liked that.
Fred the Shed.
Fred the Shed, we had some good ones, but Kindness Shed.
I put in Dave Shidi Memorial.
I really liked Johnny Kewanee, I was like, we can have a little character drawn up in it.
Right. All right, any questions, anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's it. We're here.
The moderator is on his way.
Is he on his way?
Okay.
All right, so, what time is it anyways? 6:12. Would you still like to wait, or should we move something forward?
I'd like to wait, because the reason is that we were talking about specific properties for those appointments. And if someone came in for some, whatever reason about those properties for that time.
Okay.
I mean, I wasn't worried about the bicycle, the rail trail at all.
Yeah, right, right, right.
Um, well, on the Municipal Empowerment Act, that's state legislation right now that the governor's head, office had filed earlier, it's still with the state legislature, it provides a number of options for cities and towns in the way of doing business, one of the important things, though, we don't make much use of it, for instance, is having the virtual meetings and having the state laws. Right now, I think it's 2027, they're extending the allowances under the open meeting law and that would codify permanently the ability of cities and towns to have virtual meetings, not town meetings, but board and committee meetings, that is, as an example. There are various options that cities and towns can do to take, raise local revenue that does not mean that East Bridgewater has to say yes to any of those, but it would allow our sister and brother communities in Massachusetts, if their residents wanted to do so, the ability to do so, and there are a number of other changes that are proposed in the law. So the, I, the question was really to ask whether the board wanted to send a letter to our legislative delegation in support of the Empowerment Act.
I mean, I'd be in favor of it.
Yeah.
I know a lot of communities are very excited about the double polls. That was, that received great applause at MMA last year when that was announced, people were very happy about the double poll situation, and I think, you know, it's, it's a lot of work that they have put into this, I'd like to see us support it.
Catherine?
Um, I've actively monitored the Municipal Empowerment Act, I am, I need to review the bill a little more before I can support it. I know that it's had quite a few committee hearings, I know there's a few concerns with it. I know it is supported by MMA, but I would definitely, I would like to review this if I could and take it to the next if we could.
I strongly suspect nothing's gonna happen the next few weeks.
Yeah, no, 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 there's no committee hearings on this specifically.
Would you like to carry it over for a month so that?
If we could take it to the next Select Board meeting, if we could.
By the 27th, and then, do you want to wait until the 3rd, is that long enough?
Oh, just give me, yeah, I could, I'll review it again.
We're meeting on the 10th, right?
We have a town meeting on the 10th.
Are we meeting on the 3rd? It's not on this, I'm just looking at our agenda.
Well, the, that's the schedule for 2026.
No, no, I'm looking upcoming meetings, 2025, the next one on this is the 10th, but I, I just don't know if.
Oh, well, maybe, that may be the case. Oh, all right, because we're going, because of the holidays, yeah. So, well, I wouldn't do another, unless, it'll be another five minute meeting up on the stage if you wanted to do it, then, or we can wait until the 24th, would be fine too.
Yeah, I mean, we could put it on the stage, or we can wait.
Catherine wants to wait till the 24th.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I just.
Sure, do 24th.
Yeah, that's fine. We're already open for a meeting anyways, so.
Yep, I'll, I can definitely review it by then, I will definitely review it by then, if I could, thank you.
Sounds good. All right, so I heard the jingling of keys and walking in of moderator, so, Mr. Looney, good to see you.
Good evening.
Get where we were? No? No?
You wanted to call the comfy seat. Town council here, heck yes. Hey, John, how are you?
Good evening.
All right, so we have two town meetings coming up. Both are equally important. Over the 1027 one.
That's a good idea, yep.
I see a lot of people here, so what we do, we just go over the articles, just, you know, touch base, make sure they're all set. Town council, town clerk beside me. I might know, not know some of the people, so I know that we usually have it out, but so town, article one, is to transfer money from the Board of Health. So who from the Board of Health would present that?
I think Andy Hudson is the chair, so we'll start with him, and then I'll work our way backwards.
And that's just a majority.
Yep.
And that's a simple transfer between line items within the Board of Health budget.
Right, transfer of money. Article two, we, what's the, we involve finance committee. I see they made a, I see they made a recommendation here. I guess, are, are that, I guess, are they looking to amend this?
Yes, because, right now, what they're indicating is that they would prefer an amendment to this for a lesser amount of money, because right now, we know one of the three firefighters is a definite retiree.
The other two are iffy.
And two of them are iffy at this time.
All right.
But the chief is here to speak to that, if he has any thoughts about this. Article two for the retirement, John?
Yeah, we have two that have put in submitted applications to do retirement from the county. They just haven't been finalized yet, but they will be, I imagine, before the end of the fiscal year.
So they, they can come up at the...
It could come up at a later, another town meeting, yes. Right, right now, we know there's not, nothing's gonna be happening, nothing's gonna be happening immediately, because we just checked with Plymouth County, and they're not on the agenda.
I mean, it's already been presented, it's already been published at the sixteenth, I mean, we'll have to make that motion to amend.
Yes.
So they'll have to get it in writing.
Yeah, I presume it'd be by the, is the fire chief making, well, he's an out-town resident, right, so...
Yeah, I would do credit.
Deputy chief.
I can have credit.
Deputy chief.
Yeah, the deputy should be able to make that motion.
Nothing against you, chief, but the rules require the citizen to be a citizen of the town.
Is there any way to change bylaws or anything like that?
Today.
John, it's the same problem with me. I can't present articles. I couldn't present them in Halifax either.
Oh, really?
Because, well, because you need to be a town meeting member to make a motion or to vote. That's, you know...
You could discuss on that.
But you can still speak. You can still speak on it.
Yeah, you can speak on it.
You, you can speak on it, you just can't make a motion.
And I'll defer you to speak on it, but he just has to make the motion.
It can even be moved by a member of the board.
Yeah.
Yep, hundred percent.
That's a majority.
Stabilization fund doesn't matter.
Oh, this isn't, this isn't stable, this is just...
Well, number two, part of the money is, sorry, that's the third article.
That's, yeah, this is, no, it was the second article, still majority.
Okay.
All right, this is, this is the big item. So we transfer money from two different places. One, the capital state relation, so that requires a two-thirds, doesn't it, John?
Correct.
And then the other one, just from, again, it's in line, I have it between the ambulance, so, so we should just go two-thirds for the whole thing and make it easier. Again, it will be by, we'll put Craig Windsor here. Unless the board just wants to present it and defer it.
Oh, Craig will be there, he can jump up there.
I was gonna say, what, for article two with the fire department, do you wanna do with the fire chief, would you rather us, have us defer to you, like, select board defer?
He can make the motion, and I, we can just follow on him.
I'm gonna, yeah, do we, do we defer?
But the deputy chief will be...
No, he makes the motion.
He'll make the motion.
Okay.
And then we can turn to the chief to...
Okay.
For additional information.
Okay.
Article three will be the same, where it's presented. Article four, the fire department, some, organized some supplies and stuff, I guess they're some kind of shelving and stuff, document, you know, to preserve documents and stuff. And I did, fires committee recommend, that's also, that's, that's just a transfer of free cash, that's just a majority.
The fires committee did not recommend that, by the way.
Oh, does not recommend, yep, it's on here, so it's on here, but they'll...
Yeah, it's here.
I'll, I'll have them, I'll have them ask, I'll ask them anyway.
Yeah, right.
To just get on record.
It was article four, they didn't?
Well, there's several articles they didn't recommend, but, yeah. Three they did recommend, two they recommended, yeah.
Yeah, two, yeah. Four they did, three they didn't recommend. And article, no, four they did, let me see if I got the right one.
Three they recommended.
Right, three and four they didn't.
When you said three, you meant three total, not number three.
No.
Number three they recommended.
Who's on first?
I don't know.
All right, article five. Some, I guess some contractual obligation for some billing.
It's a town meeting vote to authorize a contract loan in three years, so it's just a simple majority vote to authorize the fire department to enter a...
Right, they wouldn't have to do it for less than three, correct?
Correct.
What do they do now? Do they bill on their own?
No, they have a company that...
Oh, okay.
It's a new contract.
Do we have to defer to the fire chief and then have him answer this, 'cause are you, is the, is the fire chief's gonna speak on every single one of these?
If he wants.
If we could just, as the select board defer to him, then he could come up and speak on these opposed to Deputy Windsor, and then kinda make it more fluent, fluid here.
No, 'cause somebody has to make the motion.
Right, I think in the past, we've always had, if the department, if someone from the department's there, that's seeking, then they make the motion.
Yeah, and they may, you know, discussion, other than article four, I think they, they just...
Right, some of them might just be procedural.
Right, that's what I'm saying, yeah, I don't think we're gonna see much.
Okay.
We never know.
No, we don't know, that's for sure, but that's why we'll...
Right, 'cause, and, and one of the reasons you get the discussions, because the fires committee doesn't recommend article, and they actually don't recommend article six either.
Yeah, we can have them discuss what's...
And article six is, fire department, again, this again is just a transfer, so it's no, it's just majority.
Right.
I think the chief would, wanted to hear from the board about its views on that, on the promotional exams. I know the police department's gonna want the same thing, but this is on article six. And you might wanna, he might wanna talk with you about why he's, why the department needs the promotional exams.
Sure. Want to come on up?
Yeah.
So you get on the, just so they, pick you up on the mic.
So, thank you. So that article, the seventy-five-hundred dollars for promotional exams, obviously coming in to the department, there's a lot that I'm trying to grow and develop. One of those factors is the promotional process within the department. We have Deputy Windsor, that's set to retire in January, so to fill his shoes, part of the, the assessment center for this, or the, the cost for this would go towards an assessment center to bring in candidates, to make sure we make the right decision for that, rather than just a straightforward process of me making the decision, you know, kind of in the same road, route that I took to get here. Same thing with the lieutenant's exam. We haven't had a specific process for promoting our first-line officers and shift officers, and I'm trying to develop that, kinda get a set target for our staff, so that seventy-five-hundred dollars would go towards a promotional exam for lieutenants in an assessment center for, to fill the deputy's position.
I agree.
I mean, I think it makes sense. You're new to the department, you know, you seeking outside, you know, assessment for that makes sense to me.
Yeah, and I've reached out to a few different providers for these exams and assessments. Actually, Jack Carroll, the...
One of the guys.
Yep.
Is probably who I would use in this situation, so, just, again, creating consistency, I think is important, in kinda developing that core group of our officers.
Yep. Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Sorry.
Make it short.
Do we need to vote to support that where the FinCom didn't?
Well, I think that what, you can, I mean, eventually, one where the other, you might, you might be asked to speak to the article, that town meeting, and...
Huh?
No, I'm... No, I think it's, I think it's, I think it's more beneficial if you speak on it. If, if, if you're in favor, speak on it, 'cause those people are gonna be voting.
Yeah, okay.
You can be speaking, you know.
We can be prepared to do that.
Yeah, I can do that. Take care.
I'll back you.
Yeah. I'll just yell. Carol?
Should I leave this up for the...
For the next.
For the next victim?
So, so the next two articles are similar, a police article similar. One is to, you know, retirement.
Yep.
That's a majority. I assume Chief Jenkins will do that. And that's, and that's recommended.
Is he gonna be back, Michael?
I, I think he's...
He should be back for the meeting.
Okay.
Oh, you can do it if you're not.
Well, I'm here for tonight, if you have any questions.
All right, man.
Talk on the next one as well.
Why you come up?
Yeah, 'cause, 'cause that one, yeah, we're on the next one now.
Come on up to the hot seat, Mike.
So, again, so article seven is just a transfer, to pay someone's retirement, or who's retiring. Article eight, which the fires committee does not recommend, is very similar to what the fire chief has spoken about.
Yep.
Now, as the fire chief has spoke, they don't have a process in place. We do have a process in place. We just don't have the funds to put that process into action. The last time that we had a promotional exam was twenty seventeen into twenty eighteen, was the last promotional exam that we had. At that time, we had, and off of that list, which at the time, we were in the civil service, the list would be good for two years, plus you could extend it after that for a year. So we did promote the sergeants from that list, and we actually created the deputy chief and promoted them from that list as well. So currently, we have no list for promotions. We do need to put one in place. It would be good for three to five years now that we're out of civil service.
Yep.
Even though we are out of civil service, we do mirror the process for our promotions as far as running assessment centers for doing, we've done this since Chief Cullen was here, and we've been running the assessment centers. And it's part of our policies, procedures, and it's part of the bargaining agreements with the Superior Officers Union as well. We need to hold the assessment centers, have an eligibility list, so we can go off of that list and then do the rest of the promotional process. Having these policies in place that we do have in place right now is what helped us get certification, because we're following the best practices of policing through the Massachusetts Police Accreditation Commission, which right now, we're certified through them. Post is also looking to certify police departments. They've already certified all the offices in the state. Next, they're looking to certify all the police departments. We're a step ahead, because we already have the certification through MPAC, and they'll be looking at the same areas that MPAC is looking at. But that's part of this promotional process, is all part of that. Why do we need it now? Well, because from last month, we had one retire, but in the next five years, including that one, we have seven personnel that will be retiring, four of which are in command positions. So those are gonna need to be backfilled. All those positions are gonna need to be backfilled. We can't just not fill the positions, 'cause you, I remember back when it was lean, and we didn't have as many sergeants, and we were all working and being forced into work and getting burned out doing it. It is not productive, it's very counterproductive. We are a twenty-four-seven, three-hundred-sixty-five-day-a-year business, we never close. Sergeants cover all patrol shifts, they oversee detective functions as well. And the announcements of these assessment centers have to go out at least three months ahead of time, so we have to put all this framework in ahead of time, so we'll be able to do the announcements and then get the list to have it when the time comes. Now, the newly promoted sergeants or whoever's promoted do need to do training, mandatory trainings also, that are mandated by the Municipal Police Training Council. They have a five-day, week-long training that the sergeant has to go through, as well as suicide prevention and awareness training they have to go to for the promotion, and that's just for the basic. Then we send them, we send most of our sergeants, or have been sending most of our sergeants to the FBI leader classes, looking to build a future. We do have some officers that are trained as officers in charge. They did a six-hour class, they're kinda, as a stopgap, but the, again, the problem is gonna come with liability. If something happens, we are gonna be on the hook as a town. If something happens, we don't have the right people in place supervising. We just, we need to plan for this, 'cause if we fail the plan, we're planning to fail. That's why we are putting this article forward, and looking for the, the amount. The amount may not come out to that full amount, it just depends on how many people sign up for the test. We put in for the worst possible case scenario.
Yeah, that was the question, that was the million-dollar question. We got the fire department looking for seventy-five-hundred, you know, at least...
We, we put in for the worst-case scenario, it could be as little as ten, but we put in for the sixteen and change, 'cause we wanted to have no tricks, nothing, you know, nothing pulled one, you see everything up front. But if not everybody puts in to take those assessment centers, it's not gonna be as...
Yeah, so I think you need to make clear to the voters what the, so is this per candidate, is what they're charging you in each of these amounts? Where would the difference be?
This is for the, the total, they give you a total, like, one to five people taking it, it's this.
Okay.
Six to ten, you have that much additional on it.
I see.
So that's what it is.
The number of people that it takes.
If, yeah, that's why, if everybody signs up for it in this, just in the lower bracket, it's less. If everybody's, so more people sign up to it, you're in that six to ten bracket, now they're charging you more. That's why we, we put the worst-case scenario number up front, but it may not be that.
Right, yeah, I would make that clear.
Yeah, I would.
For sure, right, 'cause it just makes the fire department look that much better, really, to be honest with you.
It does. I, I think another thing, too, is really highlighting how many people we're gonna be losing in, I think, what in the next, how many years. We are gonna have to backfill those positions, and, you know, having this in-house and this ability to kind of grow from within, I know this is a huge plan, and there's so much talent in our police department, and so much, so many people that have really wanna grow in it, and I think having also, like, a lieutenant opportunity there is huge. But I think just kinda going to the fact that, like, this is what we need to grow, this is what is the smart decision opposed to, you know, I know it's a big number, but I also know we're gonna be losing a big number, so, if we don't plan now, then we're gonna be paying this in the future.
Exactly. And the sergeants, they have a lot of extra duties besides just overseeing patrol. I mean, you got evidence functions, you got guys in charge of firearms and getting all the training done, get everything uploaded to a Catus, which is part of the MPTC, to make sure that everything is, we're all keeping up on all the training and keeping all the officers certified. So there's a lot of things they do in the background. I have a list of all the things that the different sergeants do. I'm still doing some of my sergeant's duties now as deputy chief, as I'm still trying to pass them on to the other sergeants that have come up. So it is a process to get, teach them and bring them up to where they need to be while doing this. And we are looking to the future to do that, we're looking to take in some of the younger sergeants, having some of the older sergeants, have them, shadow them and learn what they're doing to take over for those things. I mean, things is, I don't wanna, things that we do that people don't realize, like even going out and checking businesses for business licenses, like Sergeant Grillo does. When Sergeant Grillo retires, we need somebody else to do that, so we have to have one of the other sergeants taking up that slack or taking up that position. So these are all little things that the sergeant's doing in the background that people don't realize, but it's in addition to their patrol supervisors.
Great. I have another question, I'm sorry. I apologize. No, I, I think another thing that I know, I've had conversation with, is, you know, having lieutenant and sergeant positions, you know, right now with you as the deputy chief, I know you do the majority of kind of the adminis, like, a lot of the administration work, and you do a lot of the legwork, right, like, and I think the lieutenants having that would also be able to make things easier, would make a streamlined process, and I think highlighting that, too, at the meeting, and, and just saying, having this, this position, and kind of expressing what you have to me is...
I was gonna say, with Post coming into effect a few years ago, now I'm dealing with everything with Post as far as the certifications, as far as any complaints, everything. I have to deal with those in a timely manner that they have, so it's, between that, working on the budget with the chief, those are the things I should be working on, so I can have everybody else start to take over those training things, and that's what we're working on doing now.
All right, thanks, Mike, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Does this house have representatives?
It was wrong, didn't it?
You're gonna be upset that I found that out.
All right. Mr. Looney?
Article nine. This housekeeping, 'cause didn't we do this in the annual town meeting, or has something changed?
No, we, the problem, Bob, is we never actually set the salaries. We appropriate the money, but we don't set the salaries, even though the wording of the article for that, for the operating budget says we're setting the salaries, we don't. The salaries are included in various line items that are, include other salaries and such. So, under the general laws, we've gotta set the salaries every year, so we're doing that. It doesn't change when anybody's being paid this year. Everybody who had, you know, was receiving a stipend will continue to receive the same stipend they've been receiving. That doesn't change.
All right, so Pete, you wanna do that one?
Sure.
I mean, it's just the two-thirds. I mean, majority, so I would think I was, I was, a couple of articles had, right? Article ten is just a transfer of money to fund the animal control...
Yep.
...office. Cal, you want that one?
Sure.
That's a majority. Article eleven is to transfer money to fund, something to do with the library head salary. You want that one, Catherine? We don't, we don't need libraries, so we can just have Catherine, you wanna do that one?
Sure.
That's just a majority.
You don't wanna do that one, Carol?
Probably better if you do it.
Article twelve is...
I think we were...
To do some replacement of the townwide user replacement. I don't even know what that is.
Well, it's additional PCs.
Oh, okay.
The, the ones we have eventually wear out and break down and such. So we're trying to get on a cycle that we're buying a certain number every year.
I don't, Pete, you wanna do that? I don't know if the IT director is in town, so do you wanna do that, Peter?
Yeah, I don't care.
All right, majority. All right, the next one is background check. It's a bylaw change, that's gonna require two-thirds.
No, it's supplementary.
General bylaws.
Oh, oh, it's general.
And the reason for this is we had passed the solicitation bylaw a couple of years ago, and then realized as part of the background check, we need to do fingerprinting. Well, you actually have to have a fingerprint bylaw to do fingerprinting, so this sets out exactly how we do that.
So, Cal, just, just, have you done, Cal, maybe after Peter? I would just, as...
Isn't it the police chief?
Isn't it the police chief?
Oh, I do see it. I'm going to tell him just to do what it has written.
I mean, I can.
It does say that. But it's like.
Yeah, that goes over.
Line up.
Article fourteen.
This, this is a two-thirds.
Because it's.
Truck.
After forty-four.
No, it's because it's a bond.
It's a bond.
Basically, if we're borrowing money even under a lease purchase, we've got to do a two-thirds.
I get you.
And we have to do it at town meeting, even though the money is not coming out of the general operating budgets, it's coming out of the chapter ninety fund.
Mm-hmm.
But nevertheless, because it's tied into a lease purchase, town meeting needs to approve it.
I see. Okay.
So again, so this has to the, so it looks like it's a recommendation to select board, so do you want this? Or do you want the DPW? DPW, it doesn't say, but it does say to request a select.
That's John Haynes.
Yep.
You can do that, too, though.
No, it just said to request a select board, by the recommendation of select board.
No.
Article fourteen, to see if the town will vote upon the recommendation of select board.
Well, yeah.
Right, they voted to recommend, I don't know if they want to do the article. I mean, I know it's going to the, I know the.
John will do the article.
It's going to Department of Public Works.
He'll be the one that will answer.
Yeah, I'm on answering that.
About what he's getting and all that.
Right.
Article.
Nothing about.
Fifteen, now you see these today for the first, let's see, this, okay, this is the way we do, always do this, that's that.
No, so fifteen, we have the senior tax work-off program. What the Veterans Office is suggesting or asking for is a similar program involving veterans to do it.
Oh, okay.
The Veterans Tax Work-Off Program. Now, you know, the details will have to be reviewed by the select board. I know, um, you know, any more money that, you know, if we do this, it's a policy decision in the sense of the money would have to be, come out of the overlay reserve that the assessors set up. If that has to be increased, there's less money in the regular operating budget for the normal operations of the town. Also, we have to, the board would work out exactly how much money would be, the maximum amount that would be allowed to be exempt. And I would think try and equalize that with what the seniors are either. If, if we do a higher amount for the veterans than we're currently doing for the seniors, we'll probably bring the seniors up to the same amount. But all that, you know, all those do have a fiscal impact in the sense of it's money that goes in the overlay reserve, it's money taken out of the old operating budget. Doesn't mean somebody's budget's going to get cut because of this, it just means less money is available for the normal operations.
So it's at the request of the veteran agent, but he's not a town resident, is he?
Now you can.
Now it's, Cal, I don't want you feel left out. I just want to make sure the.
I'll do the article for the veterans.
Oh, sure, I'll do that.
It's better than doing the article for the fingerprinting.
Yeah, I'm buying a truck.
Is it majority?
Yeah, it's a majority.
Got a laugh there.
Article sixteen, because of the Conservation Commission.
We actually, even though we have a Conservation Commission, was never formally established how many members and everything inside the bylaws. It's been operating fine and it's legal because you shall have a Conservation Commission. But almost all towns have a bylaw establishing the commission, how many members, how many alternative members, that sort of thing. So we're doing that this. The reason we're doing it now is the question came up as, well, can we appoint alternate members? Well, you can, but it has to be mentioned in the bylaw.
You have to know.
We don't have a bylaw, so we're, that's why we're doing it.
All right, I assume the Conservation Commission will present it?
Somebody from Conservation.
Yeah, either Claire, Craig Windsor, even Katie could.
Oh, no, she can't.
Oh, no, okay.
Sorry.
So probably, yeah, Claire.
So I'll put Claire's name.
Here's your commitment.
I know, right?
Well, wear a different hat.
All right.
Article seventeen, again, it's amend the bylaw, just increase the.
And I think it's going to be up to the board. If the board wants to amend this to seventy-five instead of a hundred, we'll write, we'll have a motion that says that.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, at the meeting.
Yeah, because if they're going to, if they're only going to do half the increase on the other ones, they may want to do the same thing here.
Captain, you want that one? Captain, you'll present that one?
John.
John.
I'm right, it has to be in writing for me, right? So if they make an amendment.
It's, it's local rules. I think what we've required is lengthy amendments be written out.
Okay.
Why don't you answer, we have, and we change it for the board.
It's okay?
Put it up in the state, yes, that's.
On the board, like a sentence or something, it's fine.
Okay, I just need to know how that works.
There's no hard and fast rule, but I think that's been our practice.
Right.
So would I present it and then read the, this and the amendment?
So we'll go up on the screen on making an amended main motion with the different numbers.
Okay, and who would make the, who would make the amendment? I would make the amendment.
Rebecca will give it to you.
Yeah, he'll have a cheat sheet.
No, she's really good at that.
Okay.
There's a two-step process from my end, so we vote on, to allow, to allow the amendment, and then we vote on the amendment if it passes.
And does it have to show on the screen?
I think, our local practice, it does show.
We'll, we'll, we'll get it printed out, we'll both have the main motion and the amended motion, available obviously to the board and to you.
So I actually told them that they weren't going to have to make any, like, changes.
Well, we'll have, but no, we'll have both in a sense of, here's the main motion, whoop, here's amended.
Okay.
Right.
You don't have to say who.
I will.
I think you should. I hope you will.
I definitely think I should.
It's, it goes beyond the scope of what they share, what they're allowed. So article eighteen, is Kevin still the chairman?
Yeah.
He is. All right, so Kevin will present eighteen. This is a two-thirds, this is a zone, this is a zoning change. Uh, it looks like what they're doing is allowing like apartments above, certain, you know, certain limitations, apartments in the B-two.
Yep.
District, so you can have, you know, a lot of, they already have apartments because they're older, you know, but this is just codifying.
And it would also allow that where they've not had developments in the B-two already.
Yes, yeah, to do it, yeah. And that's, that's, that's a two-thirds vote.
Yep.
Article nineteen, it's a, again, it's a zoning change, it's similar, it's talking about mixed-use zoning. Again, that's Kevin Riley, it's a two-thirds. Article twenty.
Yep, so twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two are all liquor related.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, we can maybe.
I could do them all.
Yeah.
Good idea.
So twenty-one is to allow for packaged store, not packaged stores, for restaurants to sell alcohol before noon.
Right.
Many, most towns, I think at this point, allow Sunday sales in the morning. For whatever reason, East Bridgewater had not. We had gotten requests from some of the restaurants to allow for earlier sales of alcohol on Sundays, and this would allow for it. It would still be up to the board to make the decisions on the licenses. So, you know, Apex Restaurant would have to come to the board and say we.
But I want to, I want to open at eleven.
Yes. Or they don't have to open eleven, but.
Or serve alcohol.
Yes, exactly.
Because right now they can't serve until twelve.
We can all have Bloody Marys at breakfast.
So these are all.
We're mimosas.
Yeah. So, yeah, so, you know, we can present them almost as a group and then just go each one.
Yeah, yeah, right, yep.
And twenty-one.
And they're all majority.
Twenty-one is to increase the number of package stores, but that requires to go to the state legislature. Um, so this would be the first, the starting point to file the bill, to have the town meeting say yes to the select board, please file this bill on behalf of the town. To our state legislative delegation.
Want a piece like four.
Go from there.
Is there demand from?
Yes.
We have a couple, yeah, we have some people knocking on the door.
Okay, you'll do all these, Pete?
Mm-hmm.
So just to back up on one other thing before we go to the next. So on the fire department ones, we can, you know, maybe the board can present them all as one and we go through each one for expedition time and then.
Yeah, whatever's easy.
And then the chief can be ready to discuss them instead of, so I think they're three in a row.
Yep.
So we can almost pack them together, correct?
Um, you know, we typically handle them one at a time, but I think one of the board members can just say, I move it, defer to the fire chief, and then you would go to the.
Right, on each one.
Just to make it move a little more.
There were five of them actually in a row.
Fire, fire? Yeah, we, we saw, yeah, just.
Yeah, we'll see how it goes. I don't think you're going to have too much other than a couple of them, obviously, that finance is not a favor, I guess. Yeah, we'll, we'll wing it.
All right.
We wing it, right?
So November tenth.
Wing. No.
Figure it out when we get there.
Yeah.
I wanted just to assign you guys the article that you're going to read then?
Yeah.
Thanks, chief.
Thanks, chief.
So article one on November tenth.
Yep, one and only.
Effects, well, because it's going to be a big one, I guess, and affects every single person in town that lives here or pays taxes because.
All of our articles affect everybody.
No, but this one, you know, if you, because even renters can see their thing, or whatever, and so, uh, this is, this is a.
So I mean, it's typical what we see from major borrowing articles.
It's the two-thirds.
It's a two-thirds vote.
Mm-hmm.
But when we go through the MSBA for any article, we, we're taking their money, we go by their rules.
Yep.
All right? So they give us the motion, which is substantially more detailed than the article, all right? But that's the practice. So the motion is what goes before the body. I think we'll, we put the motion up on the screen. I don't think it's necessary to read the whole thing, it's all boilerplate, but it'll be up there on the screen.
We'll even have copies available.
Who's the central school building committee?
Gina Williams is the chair, so I don't know if she would do it.
Yeah, she probably would.
Melanie, do you know? We haven't really talked about that, have we?
Well, I mean, we'll put her down if they want to refer to you.
I would assume it would be Gina.
I will, I'm going to refer her.
I would assume it would be Gina, she's the chair, she lives in town, so that would make the most sense.
No, I know, just wanted to make sure.
I'll let her know tomorrow night.
Because I, you know, I read this a number of times, and it is kind of wording.
Voluntaried you.
You know, to some extent. I, I think that it's got to be, you know, because I think people in their head, and when I first read it, this is a debt exclusion.
Well, it will be a debt exclusion, so the article itself is appropriate the money.
Yes, I know that.
We're, we're authorizing the board to borrow the money.
Right.
Everything is contingent on the debt exclusion.
Yes.
Which is a separate vote.
Which is a vote a week or two later.
Right.
Five days later.
Five days later.
Or whatever it is, I, I, yeah, week, it's Saturday.
No, five days.
Five days.
Saturday.
You know what I meant, Monday, Tuesday, Saturday.
Well, you didn't say that at town meeting.
Oh, no, I'm going to tell them what it is, believe me. I'm going to tell them what it is.
What people are voting for.
Right, you've got to make sure they know.
They're going to vote the full amount of the project.
Yep.
But it's all contingent.
On the ballot.
It's a two-thirds vote at town meeting, contingent on a majority vote at the ballot on Saturday.
Yep.
Yep.
So if it doesn't pass at the ballot on Saturday, it's null and void.
Right.
Now, let me ask you a question.
There is still an election.
The election.
At the election.
Yeah, you're saying.
Tuesday's happening, yeah, no matter what.
Yeah, so there will still be an election. It will not, that, whatever that election outcome will be, you would then say, the election, because this has happened. It can land, like, the vote that is done on, at town meeting, if it doesn't match the election, then we would have to go back to town meeting, correct? To approve it?
Right.
Okay.
So what's happening at the election is voters are exempting all the debt service, all right? Principal and interest for the new school, all right? They don't vote in a month, all right? So basically what they're doing at the ballot is setting up revenue for it, all right? So town meeting is designating what the cost will be, the ballot, the election is dedicating a revenue source. If it didn't pass at town meeting, we didn't get two-thirds vote, it still goes on the ballot. So in theory, and it's rare, but it does happen.
Mm-hmm.
The election could approve it by majority vote. Now we have a funding source, but we don't have an appropriation. So we would have to go back to another town meeting.
Correct.
I think under the MSBA, it would have to be done in fairly short order.
Within thirty days.
But you'd have to go back to town meeting at some point to see if you could get to two-thirds. But if you don't get both, it doesn't happen.
It doesn't happen, correct, yes.
Then the work of two years is down the drain.
Yeah.
Right, and my, I'm going to tell you, I understand towns have done it, and it's caused a lot of, you know, you do stuff for towns, I do some stuff for towns. It causes a lot of rift when you keep going back to the well. I think, I think the town, I think the people speak one way or the other, at either side. I think it's tough to say to people, oh, you know, the majority vote for, but, you know, so if two-thirds didn't vote for it, then, you know, then, then shouldn't that control? It's up to the board itself. And I have, I have, you know, personally, I have a vested stake, I have grandkids in the school, but I just think, you know, you know, you know, it's caused some problems. You know, Lockland went five times, and, and, you know, and I know people that, I represent people in Lockland that, you know, and they, and they're having problems.
Right.
Here now, it has now, it's, it's out in public record, here now, and now has, you know, an override after it was denied, and now they, they still have a shortage. Just came out, a report just came out three days ago. And so now they're going to go back. I think the town speaks one way or the other, you know, I, I'm not, I'm not a big fan of going back if, either way.
Correct.
You know, so, but, but that's up to the town.
Yeah, I mean.
It would be pretty rare, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
It has, well, it is.
I feel like it's, the town meeting one usually is the, like, yes, let's put it, let's let people vote at the ballot, like, I don't know, it.
Depends on who shows, right?
Yeah, I, I, I tend to agree with you, and that's what happened in Bridgewater.
Like, it'll pass that, but maybe not.
That's what happened in Rainham, that's what happened in Bridgewater.
The flip doesn't.
And partly because of the, what's the word I want to use? The tender or unique situation because, you know, some people that vote at the, you know, they'll go to town meeting. We, we have an open town meeting, we vote by hands, and some people don't want to raise hands either way. They don't, you know, you know, either side. When you go into ballot, you, you know, you check in, but no one knows what you're voting.
Right.
I think that's what happens in some of these towns. You're right, you're absolutely right, it's not unusual to pass a town meet, to pass a town meeting, but then fail because, you know, you, you get certain people that come to town meeting.
Right.
You know, and that's why I think it's important that, you know, that, you know, the towns, whoever watches this, we are that, that, you know, they're both very important things.
Right, right. Yeah, I think it's, it's important to stress, because I've had a lot of questions, right? Like, you know, what does town meeting do if it's not? And even people, folks in the town, you know, well, if there's not a, if it doesn't pass a town meeting, what happens? And we do still have an election, so I think people need to understand, you know, there isn't an election regardless. This is appropriating, correct, that this, this warrant, the town meeting, is appropriating that funding. The election is, is where we can, we will go out and residents can come and vote on whether or not they want this project. So there is a lot of confusion. I mean, even the beginning, I was confused, so I think, you know, making sure we stress that this is an appropriation and that the ballot, that the election will, you know, decide whether or not we go through with the project. Because we don't want to be coming back at town meeting, spending money on another town meeting, having that cost. Um, you know, we need to make this fluent and say this is.
Right, I mean, we've done it before, we did it with the high school and the.
Yeah.
Council on Aging, it was the exact same process. People understood it then, hopefully they understand it now, and they both pass and we move forward.
I don't know if we have a, I just want to make sure that I point out, this is actually not going to get posted until October twenty-seventh, which is the last day, so this isn't available yet. Um, even though I see it here, because it has not been certified and it has not been posted by a constable. So, just so you guys know.
Okay. Just two other questions that I've gotten from, and I wrote them down. So, do we have an approval letter from the MSBA?
Tell me what you mean by.
On the, on the project, because I got, I got their printout today.
So.
And the only thing that's on it so far is.
They've approved each stage that we've gone through.
Okay.
They are meeting on the twenty-ninth, Melanie, if I remember correctly.
Oh, okay, so we'll have it had a meeting.
Yeah, the twenty-ninth is, is the meeting where they will officially say, you are now approved for this reimbursement rate, this amount for this project size.
Now, that's what someone asked before, before the meeting.
I mean, they've, you know, we've gone through several stages on this project, and they've allowed us to continue going through those stages.
I know, so you figure there's going to be something good at the end.
Yeah.
And the other, and I, and I've seen another, and I just haven't seen, someone asked me, do we have, like, what it's going to cost an average homeowner over the.
They have, they did, so I went to the planning board, sorry, the finance and capo meeting.
Just a week, last week?
Yeah, I know.
Just last week, okay.
Yeah.
Someone asked.
And they do, and I watched their presentation, they do have a layout of exactly what those.
Okay, okay.
I think they'll do the same.
And we'll, and we'll be publishing that information before.
Boy, yeah, that's, I saw a couple of questions, because I want to make sure people know what, you know.
What the effect is.
We didn't want to publish it too early because it's, it's been going down from what the initial look, and as we tighten things and change things.
Sure, oh, yeah, that's good.
It keeps going down, so we didn't want to have a number out there that was too high and have people hold on to that when really it's going to be this.
And Bob, you, you know this, but the, other people may not. And Bob, you, you know this, but the, other people may not, obviously, any number we give, whether it's today or three weeks from now, is an estimate based, because it's based on certain assumptions of what the interest rate is, what the length of the term of loan's gonna be, and what, how big, you know, what the actual cost of the project ends up being when we go out to bid and such.
So, we ended by saying, come to town meeting if you wanna, you know, both days.
Yep.
Always.
And come to town election.
Always.
Yes, at the middle school.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, make sure we, I'll stress, we'll point that out again at the meeting, 'cause I got that card changing.
Yeah, I think being, having something...
Have signs at the high school?
To go, hopefully.
This is not the polling place you were looking for.
Yes, yeah.
You did a good job sending those cards out to the voters.
I also think maybe at the end, if we could have, I don't know who we need to talk to about this, but having a date and time for the election posted at the meeting for the, the ballot question, the debt exclusion, like, if we could have it posted there, you know, because I think a lot of people are gonna automatically assume it's at the high school, even though they've gotten all the information, but having that up there, whether it's in a poster or something, and say, this election will be on this date.
Let me get out, like, glitter.
Yes, yes, highlight, highlights.
All right.
Anything else made?
Um, I think I have a question specifically, so, for, for the moderator, so when, when folks come up and they come to town meeting, they ask questions, I was just thinking of this, so I work, and my day job is to work for the legislature, so, when people come to committee hearings, they have, like, two minutes to ask a question, you can't go up consecutively, I was wondering, as a moderator, are you, do you give, like, a time limit for a constituent to come up, or a lot, you know, or not a lot consecutive come up?
Nope, it all depends on the situation, if you're better timing, you'll see, you know, last time, I think we had one here come up four or five times, never in a row.
Right. You were pretty lenient.
Yep, I, I was.
Yeah.
I, I remember what the discussion was about. It, it certainly depends on the topic. Now, at some point, anybody can stop the conversation by asking me to move the question. I sometimes ignore that for a little bit, because my thought is, if they come out to town meeting, we should have them. If they get off, if they get off thing, I'll tell them, I always start by saying, we should have a civil discourse, but if, to me, if someone comes, makes their effort to come out to town meeting, 'cause there have been meetings, and you guys know, we've had thirty people, so if somebody makes it, their effort, and they're gonna be, they have something to talk about that's on the topic, I'm gonna let them speak.
Yeah.
We try not to let someone go ten or fifteen minutes, this is Peter, he has the floor to watch.
Yeah.
No, no, but, but if...
No, oh, a hundred percent, and I respect, obviously, anybody that comes up, but I, I was curious, because I know that, you know, there might be people that, they may speak for a long time, just to speak, and spew, say, ask questions.
You gotta be, you gotta be, you gotta be relevant, now, we have a couple people that go off a little up topic, and sometimes it has, it's better to let them go, I, in my twenty-one years now of doing it, I, I've had the police once come down to, remove somebody.
Okay, yeah, yeah, 'cause that was just a...
I don't know that one.
Specifically, I, my, the reason why I'm asking this, too, is because I know that there's been so much confusion, confusion with, you know, debt exclusion, override, I know that a lot of people come in, and they, they kind of, they don't know, they're, they're there to ask those questions, right, and I wanna make sure that they're able to ask that question, in a, in a way that we can answer it, and, and give that to them correctly, you know, and I wanna make sure that they're not, you know, just up there to, to speak, not just, I want them to be up there to speak their mind, but I, I also want us to make sure we're saying, you know, we've given you ample amount of time to come up and address concerns.
Right, and that, and that, yeah, we'll do that, but, but again, it's, 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 some of these are topic generated.
Yeah.
Like, the school thing, having it by itself is gonna create, I mean, I, I was not a big fan, I understand why, but it's gonna create, like you said, a lot of confusion. I have questions written down that I've talked to, you know, to say, is there an override offer, just because I'm reading it?
Right.
And if you read it, like John said, this is, this is, this is set up by the MSBA.
There, yep.
And if you read it, I mean, I was stuck today when I got it, on this one that says, the lesser shall not exceed, so wait a minute, we giving money up, but that's not what, it, it, if you read it literally, that's what it means, but if you know what they're saying, if you read this, it says, the lesser not to exceed either one or two.
Exactly.
One being the fifty-eight percent, any maximum grants, but what it's talking about is lesser of what you're asking for, like, not extras.
Okay.
So the fifty-eight percent on it, you know, you're not gonna get that for the extras, you get just for the main ones, so you gotta, so, there is confusion, absolutely right.
Yeah, and I wanna make sure we're deferring, like, those questions, 'cause I've had the same type of confusion to the people in the room that know those answers, you know, like, that have, like, now I feel like I'm an expert at overrides and debt exclusions, because I've had to figure out what those differences are, but that's, make sure it's important that, I, I just didn't know if there was, like, rules for us, for residents, to, to come up and ask those questions, and then, you know, who does, who, who, who addresses that?
So, if, if a question comes up for a certain thing, we defer, Charlie happy to answer a lot of questions, because I defer to the, to the town manager.
Okay.
John, John or Chris, whoever, they, they get deferred, because, you know, I, I'm not the one to answer, procedurally, of the town meeting, I can answer.
Okay.
I can make determinations.
One of the things that's different about town meeting is, it's not governed by law to any great degree.
Right.
It's, it's really local custom, and the local customs here, and, you know, Peter and the moderator, I mean, Bob and the moderators before him, you know, we've been pretty permissive, and, and residents don't take advantage of it. Our town meetings here are, you know, pretty cordial, pretty respectful, and we get the business done, that's not the case everywhere.
Mm-huh.
So, while, under Massachusetts law, what little law there is governing it, the moderator has tremendous latitude to cut off discussion, to allow discussion.
Okay.
But it's worked here, so, but we don't, and, and I can see with legislative hearings, you need to cut people off, all right, but we haven't had to do that here. One town, they have a two-minute clock, because people go on and on, that town is having a special town meeting tonight, that will probably go two nights, three nights, whatever.
Whoever has a clock now, too.
Yeah, so it was just, it was just something that I, I didn't know, you know, I wanna, even if it's not just consecutive, but I, I just wanted to know that, I know, there's a lot of confusion, right, at town meetings, I've been to them, and people kinda like, what is this?
Sometimes the crowd lets me know if I'm gonna let something go too long.
Right.
And I, I won't, I won't say where, but recently, a town meeting was held, and there was a certain congressman speaking, and they actually, the moderator had to tell him to step aside, because people were getting unruly.
Right.
Not, nothing against him personally, but they were there for a particular reason.
Right, yeah.
And the moderator asked the, asked this congressman to, you know, kiddy stop and, you know, sorry, and the people around their business, and...
Yeah.
They, they had, it ended up being a five-minute meeting, because he read the room, and it was three hundred, you know, three hundred and twelve against four-four, and it was an override.
Right.
And, so you can tell, you can read the room.
Okay.
And, but, but, you know, there were some people they see get up all the time, but they do their homework.
Right.
You know, some people read...
Yeah, good, bad, or ugly, they should be able to get up there and speak their piece.
So, so I, I have been, and like John, you know, has been with me, I've asked town council a long time with me, and, and Peter's been, you know, and Carol, that we, we let people, for the most part, if they make an effort to come to town meeting, 'cause we've been at town meetings when no one's here, then, you know, we're gonna try to hear what they have to say.
Perfect.
All right?
Mm-hmm.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
See you Monday night.
See you next week.
All right.
Now, we're really behind.
We are behind, yes, we only got a couple of things. All right, so, our six-thirty, and seven-five.
Which is, I apologize for the folks who have been waiting.
Sorry, Jim.
Yep.
We're not usually this long-winded, either.
No. All right, so this appointment is with Jim Coffey, representing James and Paula Coffey on the purchase of town land, map forty-one ninety, parcel ninety-three. Jimmy, wanna come on up?
You took on prompt payment.
We can talk about what's, what's the DVO, just for the racket, you can just state your name.
Yeah, my name is James Coffey, thank you for listening to me this evening. Unlike everybody else who came before you, I'm not looking for any money, I'm not gonna give you money.
Yeah, all right.
There's a piece of land next to a, a piece, parcel I own in West Union Street, thirty-six West Union, there's a small vacant piece of land next door that the town owns, that I've, I've emailed a few times about it, and I just never followed up. I'm just coming tonight to see if the town has any interest in selling that land to me to make that one parcel, join them together.
Okay, yeah, so we've been down this road a couple times, right, Charlie? I mean, with the assessor's office?
In this case, it's, right, it's a tax title property, so if the board wanted to sell it, it could do so, but we would go through auction rather than an invitation for bids. We could set a floor, for instance, and say, you know, it's not gonna be anymore, you could also put other restrictions on the property of what, you know, depending on what uses you would want to allow for that property, obviously, you can't, you know, what's, it's zoned for certainly, but if you wanted to be, not allow certain types of businesses or certain type of development, you could do that, obviously, that lowers the potential price.
Right.
But that's up to the board to make that decision, yeah.
And it's, and, and the square footage, Jim, do you know roughly, up to, you had what it is?
I think it's less than five hundred square feet.
Yeah, it's small.
Small, yeah.
Well, it's, yeah, zero-point-six acres, so, probably, what, you know, three thousand, twenty-five hundred.
All right, all right, so the process, 'cause I know we've been down this road before with, with the, same, same idea with the ones we met, heard from over in, by Robbins Pond, too, right, it was the same kinda deal, they're looking to purchase...
Maybe.
...a small piece of land over there, so we think you said the same, you remember that, right? The neighbors were, were real happy with, with the gentleman?
Yes.
Oh, no, yes, Robbins Pond, yes, so...
We remember that meeting?
No, I do, I do.
Yes, on, over on Hayward.
Was I there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was Hayward, and that was more complicated now, because it was tax...
Oh, yes, yes.
Off of Hayward, it was more complicated now, 'cause it was tax title, but because when the town accepted the parcel back in the eighties, we put restrictions on it that only the, say, legislature can relieve us of.
Right.
And we'll see if that person wants, you know, we would need special legislation filed, we'd have to go through our town meeting, this is simpler, there's no restrictions on the deed or anything.
That was my next question, if there was anything else in that. All right, so, just for Mr. Coffey and myself and the rest of the board, the, the process again is for, you know, I think it's great to clean up some of these parcels.
Or to say, yes, you're authorizing the sale of the land, we would then issue, I'd probably work with Megan, the town treasurer collector, to go through the process of doing the auction necessary.
Okay.
So it would be by auction, because it's tax title, so, you know, just like we did, was it a year ago, whatever, for the parcels over in Central Street?
Okay.
We get in here, anybody wants a bid can bid.
Right.
We have a floor saying, okay, we're only accepting minimum bids over this amount.
Okay, yep, and we go from there, all right. And, I mean, 'cause this is probably gonna come up more often, now that they're kinda going through, having spoke to Paul Wolf and the assessor's office, they're, they're...
We're starting to go, well, and we're starting to go through some foreclosure procedures.
Right.
This is not one of those, in a sense of recent, obviously, we, we did foreclose on it, but decades ago.
Right, right, okay. Yeah, I think it's, I mean, you know, I think it's a smart process to go, especially if it's got a little bit more use for, for someone like yourself that has property over there anyways, do you have any questions?
No, I, I think it's fine.
Okay.
So, with the board...
Nothing to say?
I know.
I would need the board to say, to make a motion to act, authorize the sale of the property by the town treasurer collector via auction, for, to say to the treasurer collector, play, you know, work with the assessor in placing a minimum bid requirement, and do you have any restrictions that you wanna place on the property, other than those that we have for zoning?
I would think just the restrictions that are already there.
Right, whatever zoning laws, hold up, or something like that.
Okay.
Okay.
You can buy it, but you can't make it.
Do you wanna make that motion, or you wanna say it stated by Mr. Sealy?
I do wanna say it stated by Mr. Sealy. What can I say? What do I need to say?
So, the move to have the board authorize the treasurer collector to sell this property by auction, and that the treasurer collector to work with the principal, the director...
Charlie.
You can just say it as Charlie's.
Just stated by...
It's all being recorded, the director of assessing would work with the treasurer collector to establish a, for, you know, a minimum price for sale of the property.
Okay.
We're not in, we're not in the business of giving away things for a dollar.
Okay, okay, yeah, make a motion that...
Do what Charlie says.
To, as Charlie stated.
Perfect.
Yeah, that's, that's what, authorize.
Second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
A quick question?
Yep.
That's something that would take a year, two years?
No.
No.
More than months.
More than months?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I don't know that we get it, again, I'd have to work with the treasurer collector and the, the director of assessing, I don't know if we get it done before the end of the year, I would like to, I don't see any reason why we can't.
Right.
You know, I, you know, we, we have to get the notices out, I'm sure there's a certain amount of time we have, you know, where we have to post the notices that we're auctioning the property on, somehow, for instance, I suspect we have to put a sign up on the property that says, hi, we're auctioning this, if you're interested, here's the time, here's the place, make sure that we meet all those requirements.
And that would happen most likely here in this building?
Yes, right, right in this room.
Right in this room.
Yeah, 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 we'll work with them, and I'm sure someone in, at that department will keep staying in contact with you.
I don't imagine there'll be a lot of demand for it.
I don't know, you might have to...
You never know.
You never know.
You're gonna find out who likes you.
You never know. I know that list.
It was...
I didn't need that tonight, I knew that list was small.
It changes every day, man, every day.
Yep.
All right, we're good.
Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll see you later.
Thank you for your patience, too, I'm sorry, I'm sorry we've gone to...
What you're talking about lots, that's a central school, that's a central school.
Central school, yeah, yeah, nice project, yeah. Thanks, see you, Jim.
All right.
All right, next up, I guess, I, I'm assuming you're Tom.
Let's sell some more land. Tim, right?
Oh, Tim? That was Tim.
Action.
Oh.
My father was Tom, and for all you town people knew, my dad, back in the day, coached football.
Oh, yeah, that's, okay, she's a book...
And is your mother Mary?
Yes, my mother is Mary.
Yes.
Maybe the glasses threw me off, maybe that's what it was.
I'm wearing a baseball hat.
That's true, too, right.
Jacket.
Right, right.
She's from Abington, correct?
She is, yeah.
Yeah, she's one of my favorite people at the senior center, in my day job, so she's awesome.
Oh, there you go.
She's like the cutest.
Oh, yeah.
She's awesome.
Yeah.
So, I am Tim Graham, for Three Beacon Street, lived here in town for twenty-two some-odd years, spent the better part of my youth here as well, with my dad, when he was coaching football, consider myself an East Bridgewater lifer, even though I was born and raised over in Abington, so I put forward a request to acquire the land out back of my house.
Mm-huh.
It's town-owned land, it's landlocked, I have now five children that have all gone through the East Bridgewater school systems, they're all in their next phase of life, as I am, I'm done with the coaching, I'm on business and whatnot, and as, you know, my children start looking around for properties to either buy or build, and, and it's unfortunate, most of them are looking outside the town, I wanna see if there's ability, that if I could get the land, to potentially build a, a lot or two, or maybe even five, if my kids still like me by then, depending on what's buildable out there, I don't even really know it's sure at this point, but, you know, the, the thought came up a long time ago, but then it came up more recently, when you guys did the, the master plan, and then watching town meetings, and hearing Peter talking about finding more ways to bring revenue into the town, there's not a lot of industry in town, as we know, there's a Um, there's not a lot of industry in town, as we know, there's a lot of land. Um, I just thought it was a perfect opportunity to bring it forward, and, and, you know, hopefully I can present it and, and move forward, and, and, you know, my next generation of kids grow up here in East Bridgewater.
Great, all right, to me, um, Charlie, same, same...
Well, different, because it's not tax title, the town obtained this...
Much larger piece of land, too.
Yeah, that's true.
Much larger, right, sixteen acres, I believe, something like that.
Not, not two thousand square feet.
No. Um, the, and the land was purchased by the town, or we received the land one way or the other, back in the first part of the nineteenth century, I think roughly in the eighteen teens, eighteen twenties, or eighteen thirties, something like that. Um, I know that Paula's working, I believe, with Chris to make sure, it's long enough that the deed was written in cursive.
Oh, wow.
So, we're making sure that we've, have the correct language of the deed, um, to, you know, 'cause obviously, we needed the deed to transfer, as it ended up being, it was one of several parcels that was transferred into town at that time, and we didn't have a deed citation in the assessor's records. We knew we owned it, but we didn't have the backup. And through some detective work on Paula's part, using, um, information from the other parcels around that parcel, she was able to derive which deed this was for, so... Um, but it wasn't taken by tax title, so we can't sell it via an invitation for bid. Again, the board could set a minimum price, and you would wanna recommend, um, I, I need to check to see whether the sale is done specifically by the board or by the treasurer collector, but in any event, set, work with, um, Paula on setting a minimum price, um, for the land, um, and then it's open for bid. And we, you know, we would, that, we advertise in the newspaper and other places, comp buys, probably the Central Register, I think, um, because of the value of the land, and people submit bids, and that's it. So, you know, we would place, again, a floor, and if the board said, "Hey, any allowable use via the zoning?" Fine, and go from there.
Yeah, I think we're in the same kind of predicament, obviously, a bigger piece of opportunity for, for you. Let me ask you just personally, is it, is it, is it accessible outside of, from where you, where you are?
Completely landlocked, so when I first moved into town, there's a partial easement, right? So, it's a private road, it's my private road.
Yep.
There's a partial easement the town has for, there's two parcels that I own at the end of it.
Okay.
Town has access through one parcel, but not the other.
Mm-hmm.
So, they were looking at, working with Habitat for Humanity, like, twenty years ago.
Oh.
And when they found out they hadn't, they didn't have the proper easement to go from Central Street all the way to the back lot, it stopped the process. So, since then, there's been no activity whatsoever. I mean, our, my roadway is, you know, has the full allotment, and it's already established.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Good. Yeah, I'm, um, same idea, you wanna make a motion, you got questions, or...
Um, yeah, do we set a minimum amount of...
Well, to work with the director of assessing.
Okay, so she's still, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, they get appraised.
Okay, perfect. Um, okay, make a motion, um, as Charlie stated, in regard to...
Right, and the, what, the board is authorizing the sale of this particular parcel, um, either through the select board itself or through the treasurer collector, depending on who, in fact, you know, work with town council to make sure the proper authority is doing this, um, and that the, whatever body is doing it, work with the director of assessing to establish a minimum sale price, and then authorize whatever steps necessary to sell the parcel.
Okay, okay.
All right, motion's made?
Second.
Motion's made, second, any further discussion? Anything else?
That's it.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
There you go. Thank you.
All right. Good to see you, buddy.
You too, as well.
You'll have yourself a regular compound.
Yeah, right.
See, you like the show.
Yeah, right. We're here every other Monday.
You know, we have, we have openings on boards, Jim.
It's not town, anyway.
Yeah, get out of here before you get looped in.
You'll move back to town for that. All right, uh, I think that's everything. Did we finish the, uh... Yeah, we, yeah, we did, we did all the announcements, I mean, not announcements, uh, we did all the action items, right?
Yep, we did.
Okay. Uh, let's, Charlie, you got anything else to add? Well, let's go for announcements. Lee, what do you got?
Nothing. Sorry. Nothing tonight. Um, just, um, the two special upcoming, you know, special town meetings.
Mm-hmm.
Um, October twenty-seventh, Monday, November tenth, special election on the fifteenth. Uh, warrants are posted on the website, um, at town hall, if you prefer a paper copy, the library, the COA.
Not this one.
Yeah, wait, are the, what's, what's the warrants, I thought the warrants weren't posted.
Well, first, this one is.
The twenty-seventh is posted.
That one is.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's one.
The other one hasn't been posted yet.
Yeah, hasn't been posted.
So, this one hasn't been posted?
But...
Hasn't been posted by a constable. We, we printed them out, so the residents can view the warrant.
And the information on that warrant, the one for the November tenth, the article and the motion are available on the website.
In the accurate.
And what is the constable's, why is it the, what is it?
He posts in six places, um, around town.
It's a requirement of the state law. Basically, you've gotta be waving, it used to be the way of, you know...
Stapling them up on...
Tell them.
Double balls.
Before the newspapers and TV and websites and everything, you know, you had it posted in six places in town.
Okay.
And usually, they were fairly public...
The old Standish Grill.
The old, yeah.
Right.
So, now, instead of the Standish, it's going to be at Mary Lou's.
Okay. So, the twenty-seventh is at, the twenty-seventh is posted?
Yes.
Okay, and the...
Tenth?
The tenth is not posted?
Will be posted next Monday.
Well, no later than next Monday. I hope they don't wait...
That's the last day.
Yeah, I hope the guy gets... I hope they don't wait until Monday, because Murphy shows up under those circumstances.
Okay, so those will go out to the designated places, November tenth? Okay, or whatever.
Prior to twenty-seventh.
But always, the residents always ask to, to view the warrant as soon as possible. So, whenever we kinda have it ready, and approved by town council, we typically print them out, and so people can...
Yep.
Can view them.
Okay.
Great. Okay, uh, Charlie, you have anything else?
Um...
Under your...
No, but just, it's seven PM on the twenty-seventh, seven PM on the tenth. The town election is on Saturday, November fifteenth, eleven AM to seven PM, at the middle school. We'll have signage up, but, and I know the board's been very adamant, I'm glad you are, about trying to remind people it's over at the middle school for the election, not the junior, senior high school.
We got a lot of electronic boards that I talk about all the time, we can put it up on all of them, right?
Um, yeah, I have, uh, no, I don't have a question.
Oh, you can have questions, what?
No!
I was gonna open up the board discussion, so if you have a question.
Peter, tell you another thing, I, I've been slowly putting up copies of the articles on the town Facebook page.
Okay.
Basically, here's the, here's the language of the article.